Call order, meeting for the Normal Town Council for December 5th, 2022. Please call the roll.
Mayor Kuz?
Here.
Mrs. Loren?
Here.
Mr. Nord?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Preston?
Here.
Mr. McCarthy?
Here.
We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Well, we have no public commenters at the beginning of the meeting. We do have one at the end of the meeting. Um, we move to the omnibus agenda items that will be taken with one vote unless a council member would like to pull an item for discussion. Hearing so not...
With approval.
Second.
Items on the omnibus tonight are approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of November 21st, 2022. A report to receive and file town of normal expenditures for payment as of November 30th, 2022. A resolution authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Bloomington, McLean County, and the Ecology Action Center for solid waste management services. A resolution to award the bid for roof replacement for the water department to Western Waterproof and Company at a total of $148,000 and approve of an associated budget adjustment of $13,000. And a resolution to accept water treatment plant chemical bids. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Loren?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mayor Kuz?
Aye. Those items are approved. Uh, we have two items in general orders tonight. The first is an ordinance authorizing the 2022 property tax levy.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Discussion on this item. Mr. Nord?
Thank you. Um, we had, uh, last year nearly a $400,000 surplus in revenue and the year prior $12 million surplus. That's more money than what we needed from the taxpayers. So we've got that surplus and I moved that we reduce this tax levy by $200,000.
Mr. Nord, I'll need that in the form of your amendment, please.
Okay, but that is less than, well, that's about half of what the surplus was last year. So I'd like to make a motion, or I moved to make a motion to reduce the property tax levy by $200,000.
Uh, could you put it in the form, uh, you would like to amend?
I would like to amend the, um, ordinance.
Fair enough. Is there a second?
A second.
Second, discussion on the amendment. Mr. Nord?
Um, many of us have told the public that we have nothing to do with, or that we will fight to reduce property taxes. This is now a very easy way to show our constituents that we were actually being honest when we made that statement because here we have the ability. It's a very nominal dollar amount that really won't impact our budget or our spending much because we've got such a surplus. So, um, I guess I'd just like to see if people are truthful with their campaign positions or kind of where everybody stands. Thank you.
Further on this item, on the amendment, so we're voting, oh, Mr. McCarthy, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to remind everybody that, um, any surplus budget amounts have already been spoken for. It's not just sitting around in our checking account waiting for us to spend.
I don't think you're, we're not hearing you again.
Can you hear me now out there? All right. Sorry about that. Back to eating the microphone to be heard. Uh, I just, a surplus has been mentioned and thrown around in, in this meeting and previous. Just want to remind anybody that any surplus, uh, above budget has been programmed into the budget and is not just sitting around waiting to be spent. Uh, also, um, last year and in previous years, um, we had quite a bit of discussion about last minute, uh, budgeting from the table, uh, that, uh, we end up in bad spots from shooting from the hip and, uh, that, uh, we pretty much all agreed around this table to not do that at this meeting. Um, but here we are attempting to do it again. Uh, I do want to remind everybody that you don't have to look too far, that, uh, many, many communities and, um, organizations, agencies, taxing authorities are raising their levies in response to increasing costs and we're in a unique position to not have to do that this year. Um, it won't always happen, but we are keeping it flat and essentially taking, uh, millions out of the general fund to do that, uh, out of the operations of, uh, our community. And, uh, so it's quite an accomplishment, um, from staff to be able to operate the community, uh, and pay our increasing costs, fully fund our pensions without asking for one more penny than we did last year from, uh, the citizens of Normal. I think that citizens are being well served. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
I want to reinforce that any budget surplus that existed at the end of the previous fiscal year has been allocated and it's been designated to go for police and fire pensions uh, in an effort to get us more caught up on that commitment. And as for the current year, whether or not it will generate a, a surplus is uncertain because as I recall, we've had another number of items come before the council that have required budget adjustments because of higher than anticipated budgeted cost for these items. And in some cases, items have been voted down in an effort to seek alternatives. So I, I don't believe that a $200,000 adjustment from the table without any research is, is a wise action for this council to be taken.
Ms. Loren?
I'll piggyback on to what, um, council member McCarthy and, and Smith have already said, but add a few other details. Um, in terms of, you know, the last couple of years, particularly two years ago, um, you know, coming out of, going through the pandemic and coming out of the pandemic, that year alone and probably much of the year following was very unusual. And so, um, I think some of that surplus that's being mentioned, um, from a couple of years ago, let's not lose sight of the fact that it was as a result of, um, some very good, um, conservative posture taken on what we didn't know was going to happen during the pandemic. And our finances came through that very unusual period, um, stronger than expected. If you recall, we didn't do a lot of things like open a swimming pool that year of 2020. So that year alone was very unusual. Um, and, um, the other point that I don't think has been made yet, we've, we've talked about surpluses for the last two years being already allocated. Um, let's remember that what they've been allocated for, much of the previous year ago was allocated for was to help pay down and restructure our debt, um, so that we can be, um, good stewards of, of our loan obligations and to, uh, tidy them up sooner rather than later. And then as Ms. Smith has already said about, um, meeting and trying to, um, be strong on our position and stronger on our position to fund our, um, our obligation on pensions. So those are two very good things that, um, I think we have done with some additional revenue. Um, and so I didn't want those items forgotten. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, go ahead, Ms. Harris.
Thank you.
Got it.
Um, not to belabor this any longer, but I do want to, um, first of all, say that I, I'm not comfortable with re-legislating from the dais, um, in situations, especially concerning the budget. I feel like if there is a concern or an issue that I should have gotten a phone call or an email, um, to discuss with before prior to this being put at the dais. But also, um, you know, we are keeping that levy flat, which has an impact of, um, a decrease in the actual tax rate, um, which is something that has not been mentioned. So I think it's good to note to that. Um, along with other things that we have been able to do, which is take our funding for the pensions back to 100%, which is something we have been trying our best to do. Um, because we want, again, want to be good stewards in that way as well. So, um, for, for me, um, again, I don't want to re-legislate, um, from the dais. I feel like there's been at least 30 days, if there was any other consideration, that I should have been reached out to.
Thank you. Mr. Nord?
Thank you. Um, this is nothing new. I brought this up last council or the past, well, whenever we first talked about this. And making this change from the dais, um, we did this three years ago. Made this change at this exact same time because before we had said we were not going to raise property taxes. And then last minute, we raised property taxes. So, um, this is exactly the reverse of what we did before. And as far as the money already being spoken for, you know, we had already taxed and collected money for a new fire truck and for a bunch of pickup trucks. And then that money's sitting in reserves. And then we changed our purchasing policy. Instead of buying outright, we're now leasing them. So, you know, we do have quite a bit of extra money in reserves. And inflation has come about and that has increased sales tax that the town has received and is collecting. So, you know, as that continues to go up on the other side of the equation, we are going to be receiving more and more revenue just because of sales tax inflation and, you know, the like. So, um, again, I don't see this as a whole lot. It's just, are we going to be able to keep up our promise to our constituents? When we told them we would fight for them for, um, reducing property taxes and that's really just what this vote just signifies. Thank you.
I would just point out, Mr. Nord, that, um, the references that, uh, revenues increase, uh, doesn't take into account the fact that expenses increase as well. So what we're, we're buying a year ago, we're paying 9% probably or more in addition. So as, as revenues indeed are going up, so are our expenses. Further on this?
I just, for clarity, uh, it was talked about renting. We, we don't rent fire trucks, folks.
Police.
For the, the, um, public. Fire trucks were mentioned. We don't rent the fire trucks. We purchase them and maintain them and service them according to manufacturer policies. And so that's not something that the town of Normal does, uh, as well. Um, and just to reiterate, um, the mayor's point, um, we saw in our water bill alone, it's relevant. Uh, it's on the agenda, but the chemical bills, uh, uh, gone up astronomically as, as costs in other, every other department. And so as does cost, um, hopefully some of these revenues come up to help offset, uh, the millions being taken out of the general fund to cover pensions because we're keeping our, our tax levy flat. Again, while other communities are raising theirs, to meet these increased costs, we're keeping ours flat and taking money from elsewhere to pay these increased costs. And hopefully our revenues, uh, will come up to, uh, make sure that we can, uh, do everything that we, uh, promise, uh, that we do for the community every year. Thanks.
Uh, you've already had your two, two opportunities, Mr. Nord.
I've only had one.
Uh, please call the roll on the amendment.
Mr. Nord?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
No.
Ms. Harris?
No.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
No.
Mrs. Loren?
No.
Mayor Kuz?
No. The amendment fails. Now we're back to the original discussion on that. Please call the roll.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Loren?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Mayor Kuz?
Aye. That ordinance is approved. Item eight is ordinances authorizing the abatement of 2022 property taxes for debt service. Motion for approval.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion on this item. This is a fairly routine item where our general obligation bonds, um, we're required to pay them. Um, and we have sufficient funds on hand to pay them. So we're abating, um, um, that, that obligation. Please call the roll.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Loren?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Kuz?
Aye. That item is approved. We have no new business. Um, we do have one public, um, comment, um, for, uh, Jody Pumas, if you want to come forward. Um, just for the, the basic rules, I'd, we'd ask you to state your name for the record and you have three minutes.
Thank you. To those of you that don't know me, my name is Jody Pumas and I work in the clerks department here at the town of Normal, as well as being a Normal resident since 1995. Council members, employees, and fellow residents, I have come here tonight to discuss an email I received from council member Nord that I found intimidating, unethical, and unprofessional. In this email, it seems to me Mr. Nord is trying to intimidate employees of the clerks department, to believe they are committing a felony while also intimidating employees of the clerks department to be okay with partaking by saying, "My boss instructed me to commit this, to commit a crime." I find myself and fellow clerk employees to be of higher moral standards and conscientious of our work and interactions with the public. I was very upset, upset and offended to receive an email like this from a council member, both as an employee and as a resident. I want to thank my boss, town clerk, for escalating this email to the city manager, Pam Reese, and Mrs. Reese's response to council member Nord and for informing council. Council members, I want you to be aware, I have been quite upset by this email and I believe it was wrong for council member Nord to send this email to myself and my fellow clerk staff. I hope you find a way to address this inappropriate behavior. Mr. Nord, if you have issue with my job duties in the future, please heed city manager Reese's email and address those items to her or Mayor Kuz. Do not send me any more threatening emails. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening and for your consideration on this matter as it took me time to calmly and collectively read my thoughts to you tonight.
That concludes our business here tonight. Uh, before taking a motion for adjournment, are there concerns or comments? Mr. Nord?
Thank you. Um, the email that was sent, I requested people fill you for it and read it because it was not meant to be intimidating or threatening. It was simply to state that there is a question in the public about the, how the town can have, or the town could be an incorporated town and not have an elected town clerk. Um, as we know, this went to court here just a few months ago. And even the judge had mentioned that it appeared as though there was something wrong in Normal that we were not following state statute. I had sent an email to Mr. Day back on November 3rd, asking him to look into this. Ms. Reese sent an email to the council stating that, um, the staff would not be looking into this research request. Then members from the public, um, submitted a, or submitted nomination papers for this office. That office was not published online, just like the other nomination papers that were. So when the public brought this to my attention, I sent an email to the clerk's office, letting them know that it should follow the same process as all the other nomination papers that have gone forward and provided the, uh, state statutes. So if that's intimidation, it was not intended to be. It was intended to just let people know that there is a large segment of the population that needs this question answered. I've brought this to the attention of the council multiple times. I've spoken about it here multiple times. How is it that state law says that an incorporated town is required to have these elected positions? Yet not even this council appoints the people to those positions. One person who's not elected selects who these folks are. You know, this at some point is going to be heard. But, you know, I do worry for the staff because I understand that you work here. You know, this is a job. This is how you put food on the table. So, you know, that is the intent of why I sent out the email. As I understand, you're in a difficult situation, which is what I put in the email. But don't do things, um, that you may, well, that may not be legal, you know? Under the color of law is not a valid reason for staff to be doing things. So use your own judgment because I don't want anybody to risk their integrity, which, um, it was not intended to be intimidating, just to let you know, here's what a large segment of the population is wondering. So I apologize if it offended anyone. It was not my intent.
Mr. Nord, I would point out one thing, that we are a council manager, form of government. You know that, that we are a council manager, form of government. As a council manager, form of government, we have one employee, one employee, the city manager. And it's inappropriate and unethical for council members to go behind the back of the city manager and try to do business with staff. It's inappropriate and unethical. I'm not going to argue the point with you on making a statement.
When the city manager instructs staff not to answer my questions that are in the ordinance, then that is inappropriate.
Mr. Nord, you had your chance to talk. You're out of order.
You made it a dialogue.
Further, uh, council comments or concerns? Mrs. Reese?
Sure. Um, I'll share some thoughts with council and certainly with staff, of which, as always, we have a, um, quite a few staff in, in the audience this evening. And I do want to follow up, first of all, um, thank Ms. Pumas for, um, sharing her statement during public comment. It, it's an interesting situation in which, um, we find ourselves as public employees. Um, the experience has been that, um, it's basically a political strategy, as I understand it, to, to make any, to, to make attacks and make up things, statements that aren't true when someone disagrees with you. That's been my experience and council knows that. We've talked about this at the table. Um, in, in recent months, and I'll just focus on a few months, I, as the city manager, have been accused of being corrupt, of discriminating against a council member, of being unethical and immoral, of, um, eroding the public trust, of, um, violating my professional code of ethics. Um, I was even called a disgrace to my profession because I would not do every task that, uh, Mr. Nord asked of me. And in order to balance my time, I did respond and said, "I can do that if the majority of council agrees." Because the majority of council did not agree that that's how my time should best be spent, I was called a disgrace to my profession. So I've, I've had all of those accusatory statements made of me, not just here at the table, in emails, and frankly, even in the media. And the reality is I can take it. I'm in this position because I'm the leader of the organization and frankly, I think I do a pretty good job. And council has said that before. Um, it is not staff's role to take those sorts of accusations. I'm in this position and I can handle whatever kind of accusations council will make of me. But we all know that each of those accusations have been without merit. They have been baseless. That doesn't mean they'll cease, but they have always been baseless and without merit. I was, it was said recently that a responsible manager, city manager, looks out for taxpayers. And I agree. And I'm proud of being a responsible city manager who looks out for taxpayers, which is one of the, one of the great things of managing this organization and the budget, the levy we brought to you tonight. I think those are all things to be proud of. I would also argue that a responsible manager does more than just look out for taxpayer. Responsible manager also looks out for the organization and the good of the organization and does its best to protect the organization, the culture of the organization when it is strong and positive, um, protects employees and thereby protects taxpayers. So, so I will continue to advocate for this organization and for staff and, and will do my best to set this organization up for success. Um, I would hope that council continues to support me in doing that. And I also hope council can agree that, uh, along with mayor's statement, um, that it is important for council, if you have concerns with anyone's performance, you share it with me. Because it is not appropriate for any employees to feel like anyone in a leadership role is making them feel intimidated or uncomfortable or, um, threatened in any way. And part of my responsibility as the, the manager is to make sure that doesn't happen because that puts us at risk. Um, so just, just here at the table, directing the clerks department or any department staff to say, "Don't do anything illegal and don't, you know, don't compromise your integrity." While that's good advice, um, it, it's, it's unfortunate because that, that, that comes with some, some, um, concern based on all the statements that have been made in the past that are without merit and it, it raises concerns and it makes, um, it, it sets us up in a, on a bad path. And so I'm simply, um, suggesting that moving forward, like Ms. Pumas suggested in public comment and like the mayor has indicated, um, Mr. Nord, moving forward, I ask that you direct your communication rather than to the clerk staff, um, to me. And should you be interested in filing a FOIA, you can do that online. Um, there's lots of things you can do digitally and, um, because of the current situation with how your communication was, um, perceived, um, I, I ask that that be a priority for you. And I ask that you respect that and you communicate through me.
Further comments? Uh, Ms. Smith?
I try not to make it a habit of calling attention to what someone else has done, but instead reflect on personal experience. But in an instance like tonight, I think if we sat here silent, it's a disservice to the staff that work so hard for this community. I remember recently driving on, over Towanda when the weather had dipped low. And on a weekend, there were staff out there, town staff, shoveling and breaking up some ice that had formed and trying to find a solution so there was not an accident on it. And it's instances like that that really make me proud to be representing this community. And as far as it not being intimidating to state in it, I am not accusing the clerk's office, which currently does not report directly to the public of any wrongdoing at this time. Um, that leaves the door open that there is potential for throwing some people under the bus. And to put in bold notice, it is a class four felony to knowingly prevent the lawful nomination of any person elect, to elected public office. And then cite chapter and verse underneath that, I would tend to read that as intimidating. And as far as not being able to address town staff, in our four sessions that we have had on strategic planning, it has been emphasized to us as council members and the mayor that we require four votes to pass anything. And I applaud Mr. Nord that he has succeeded in getting some of his items passed. He was the driving force behind moving the memorial from in front of our prior city hall to the Peterson Plaza. And that, that was something that had been overlooked and was well deserved. But since then, there has been little... But since then, there has been little to no effort to reach out to the rest of us and get any consensus, and to then expect that individual to-do list submitted to either the city manager or any other department head or the town attorney are to be done at the drop of a hat is presumptuous at best and arrogant at worst. And I would simply say that it is beyond the pale to not understand that when you're speaking from this dais, first of all, we're raised up physically. Our words carry weight. I understood that when I was teaching. I understood that whatever opinion I might have, I needed to keep to myself, because I was there to help those students find their way, and I think we need to remember that. That we are representatives of the, what is good for the whole community, and not to simply push an agenda. That we are here to govern and not to continuously campaign. Thank you.
Ms. Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. This is, um, something hard for me to take in. Only because it breaks my heart to have someone come before us and basically talk about the fact that we have not been responsible in our roles. And it's impacted them. I know in corporate America, when things like this happen, there's investigations that take place, and at times, even jobs lost. In the moment somebody says that they've been placed in a hostile work environment, or feel like they've been discriminated against, or anything of that nature. In this case, things are slightly different. And I feel terrible, because basically, we have to say, "Sorry, come back to work tomorrow", and there's nothing we can do to give you any res, full resolution. And that bothers me. Because you deserve, as a staff, much better than this. At no time should anyone feel like the work that they do is inadequate, or if their job is in peril from them doing their job, or even go home with the stress of just feeling like your best today just wasn't enough. And I understand that, because I've sat in those seats before myself. And that's not the culture we've had. Before I even sat on this dais, I've worked with many staff and much of the people who've worked for the town of Normal under different circumstances, whether it was through NAACP or as a board member on the Children's Discovery Museum. And what I loved most was the culture. And for you to feel like it's gone and has been diminished, that breaks my heart. We have to do better. We have to do better to show you that we support you. Many of you are at the top of your game in your profession. It kills me when people who don't even have a JD or a law degree and hasn't even taken a bar, can quote legislation and also determine what that legislation means. Very interesting. And, and, and then tell you not to believe the person who has a law degree. Or someone who might come before us with a JD. Also, can tell you about every profession, but they don't have an accountant degree. They not certified in accounting. They're not certified in these areas, but tell you how to do your job where you are the professional. That's heartbreaking. Because I would be disheartened if someone came to my job, the job that I have been certified to do, and to tell me that they know my job better than me. And for that, I apologize. That you've had to endure this to the point that it comes to this. In closing, one thing I do want it to be said, I hate when people conflate and inflate numbers. There is approximately fifty-three thousand people in this community. And before we can start saying large portions and large percentages, show me large percentages, sixty percent, seventy percent, eighty percent of fifty-three thousand people, and then I'll believe you. Until then, I'm going to make sure I'm serving to the best of my ability for all. And that also includes our staff, who many live right here in this community, just like I do. Thank you.
Any further comments or concerns, Ms. Loren?
I too want to offer my apology. On behalf of the council, this should never, ever have happened. I am beyond words, really, um, Ms. Pomus. I am very amay, in amazement of your courage to step forward. A lot of people wouldn't do that. And so I commend you and will forever admire you for taking that bold step. This is really bad. What has been discussed here tonight is really, really bad. If we aren't there, we are on the threshold of, um, a hostile environment. And that concerns me very, very much. I'm about speechless with what has transpired.
Thanks, Mayor. I don't have anything prepared to say in response to what we've heard tonight. I do want to reflect on a couple of comments made and, and maybe offer my own. Acting in a consultative role for most of my professional life has put me in contact with companies, large and small. A statement by my colleague that, um, behavior like this would be dealt with decidedly different ways than is likely to play out here is fully accurate. Fully accurate. Complaints made to HR about intimidation, threats, are taken very seriously, and, uh, obviously, we're taking it very seriously, learning about it, uh, tonight. And, um, I too want to say, "I'm sorry." I've, uh, never experienced anybody having to come up in public air a grievance that happened as a matter of their workplace. Uh, we're much different than a private corporation. You have a politician who is elected to be in the public putting an employee in a situation to get dragged out into the public. That is wholly inappropriate and very unfortunate. I've never seen that done. We see that in faraway places, uh, on federal level of political insanity that we see on the news. We don't see it here in Normal, Illinois, but we are now. I, I don't even... Folks, do you want this type of conversation in your government? Is this what we should be doing up here? Is this what you want? I mean, seriously, this is simple. From the minute you get elected, you understand what the job is and how to communicate with staff. It's told you from the beginning. You communicate with the city manager, the one employee that we have any responsibility for. And we charge the city manager with the operations of the community. That means hiring and firing disciplined staff. And our job is to communicate any concerns with the city manager. I don't even know why we're having this conversation. And a city councilman using city council position to advocate for politics is beyond the pale. Trying to use his position as a elected official in a governing role to play politics is beyond the pale.
Out of order. Do you have proof of that, that it's politics?
Mr. Nord, this is, uh, this is, Mr. Nord, this is public comment. Mr. Nord, this is public comment, and you're out of order. Quit interrupting people.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I don't have, none of this is prepared. I didn't, just still trying to digest what's happened here tonight, and, uh, what I'm learning about what's going on here. I certainly hope whatever path available, um, to look at this and consider the consequences, uh, I don't, I don't know what those are. I don't, I don't know if there are any in this situation, but I'm guessing that the remedy isn't what you might expect in a private corporation if, if, uh, people get addressed this way. And for that, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't know what else to say, uh, how to address this, um. I, I just hope we can get back to focusing on governing and quit playing these games. We're wasting taxpayer time, we're wasting tax, taxpayer dollars. Politics shouldn't have to be employees of a government coming up like this. Why does governing have to be like this? I don't, I don't understand it. We're all human beings. I hope we can treat each other with dignity and respect. And gosh, maybe some love and care too, along the way. Thank you.
Mr. Preston?
Thanks, Mayor. For the last nine and a half years now, uh, that I've been on this council, I have felt continually that town staff has outperformed, uh, outshined, uh, the elected officials, uh, who are also with, with your organization, and nowhere, or during no time has that been even more clear, um, than these last three and a half years, when, uh, far too often, uh, your council meetings have, uh, been an embarrassment to the organization, um, and to the great work that staff does every day, uh, where in the town of Normal, bad. Uh, I've spent this year out in public, talking to a lot of people in a lot of places around this region, and when it comes up in other communities, "Oh, you're on Normal's council", we watch our council meetings for fun, uh, on YouTube, um, to make ourselves feel better about, you know, the job that we're doing in our city. That's not anything, uh, that anybody, uh, wants to hear, and it's certainly not reflective of the tremendous and competent work that our town staff does, um, across the board. Uh, I think that it, um, should be, I think it should be articulated and kind of stating the obvious, um, to, uh, Ms. Pomus and to everybody, um, on staff who's here tonight and who's watching, listening to this. Uh, please take note that, uh, six of your seven council members, um, are, uh, speaking, um, tonight in a way that is vastly, uh, different than the seventh. And I don't want that point to get lost ever, uh, amongst all you guys. Uh, grateful for what you do, grateful for what this organization does, and there's a lot more to do. Let's get back to, uh, back to the good work of the people of Normal.
I'll wrap up with a little, uh, comment too. The town of Normal has gained national accolades and awareness for the fine work that is done in the town. And it is you, the staff of the town of Normal, that do that work. And it's our job to help you and give you the tools and support you to do that work, but you're the ones that do the work, so this is a, a good time to say thank you for that, for all the awards we've gotten and, and, uh, accolades and notices. It was your work that did that, so we are appreciative of that. You know, in the business I've had for forty years, we have an attitude that our customers are incredibly important, vitally important. But so are our employees, equally as important, if not more important sometimes, than our customers. Because we can't function at a high level unless we have the trust, the respect, and mutual admiration for each other in our organization. And it's very clear that that, that is the culture of the town of Normal. So thank you for maintaining that. I think I won't keep going on and on about this, but, uh, I'm a little shocked that Ms. Pomus had to come up here and do that. That was a brave thing to do. And, and thank you for doing that, um, and bringing awareness to what could be a problem, a bigger problem going forward.
Motion for adjournment, please.
Second.
Please call a rule.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Loren?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mayor Kooz?
Aye. We are adjourned.
When will I be able to get the answers to how the town can go without having an elected clerk?